Call this meeting to order. Will we rise for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Welcome to the meeting. I remind you, please, if you have a cellphone, to silence it, please. First order of business is the minutes from the last meeting. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to accept them.
Second. Motion and second to accept the minutes with the changes, I believe, that Mrs. King gave Mrs. Whitaker. Question? All who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Next order of business, sealed bid openings for county liability insurance. And let opener thief missed this one. We only have one. They were advertised probably a month ago. Probably a month ago. And the deadline was 8:30 this morning. This is from Wilson Lawson and Myers, a local company. This is for our property and casualty Counselor, should we recess for a moment while you and perhaps anybody will look at these, or?
If yes, I think then...
Okay, okay. I think, I'm sorry. Yeah, well, I just want, I mean, not just her, but you, but she's there. We're going to stand in recess for a few minutes while these Okay, we're back in session. Mr. Wilson, could you or whoever come up here, please? We have a few questions for you.
Mr. Wilson, does the total policy limits include in your proposal, is that with the $1,300, $3 million for the law enforcement or the $1,000,000?
Those are both options. Both of those options are laid out. With the $1 million per occurrence, $1 million aggregate on the law enforcement, the total annual premium is $208,412. With the $1 million per occurrence, $3 million aggregate, the total premium is $218,903.
So we have two different numbers here as far as the quote, if we want the aggregate to be $3 million or if we want the $1 million?
That's correct.
Now, your proposal is safe. This was the most problematic area as far as a risk assessment. Now, does getting more insurance help or hurt that, or does that just isn't all claim dependent?
Obviously, as an insurance person, I always recommend err on the side of greater coverage. However, I also understand budget constraints. And I can say to you at this point in time, historically, the limits have not been concerned. That is historic. However, looking forward, obviously, I cannot make an assessment whether they will or they won't. Not a good answer, but if I had the crystal ball, I could answer you, but unfortunately, I don't.
So for an $11,000 difference, round figures, we'll go for, we'll go from a $1 million annual aggregate to $3 million with the same deductible, correct, $50,000? Is that $50,000 per occurrence?
That is per occurrence, yes.
And that's our deductible?
That is correct. I will expand upon those limits just a minute. The deductible applies to all expenses incurred by the company, meaning attorney's fees, and the expense that is directly incurred, not by the company itself, but by employed attorneys and/or the fees that they charge. So those are subject to the deductible. However, defense costs are outside of the limit of liability, which means that the $1 million is solely available to pay the loss. The defense costs do not have a limit. It is above and beyond that $1 million limit of liability. So the $1 million remains solely to pay the loss.
Pay the award.
The award, not the cost of defense.
And that's assuming that there's an agreement, or it actually goes to trial and wins?
That's correct. They also provide another provision in that coverage in that they have a consent to settle agreement, meaning that if they have reached a settlement with the other party, they will come back to you and say, this is where we have reached an agreement to settle. Are you agreeable with that? If you are agreeable with that, then they will settle the loss. If you are not agreeable to that, they will not settle the loss. They will take it further. However, if in the final determination, the settlement is in excess of what they had agreed upon initially, they will not pay that additional amount.
Are you talking about an arbitrary figure they came up with for what this hypothetical case is worth, or are you talking about, are you talking about the coverage limits?
I think he's talking about if they recommend that you settle claim X, and you guys don't, and then say it was for $40,000, then it ends up being, the final settlement's $60,000, they're not going to pay that additional $20.
That's correct. That is correct.
Overall, Brad, how do these figures compare to last year's money-wise?
Money-wise, comparing the same limits, which is the EMC package, general liability, and auto, and buildings, and employment practices, employee benefits, the umbrella, and the $1 million per occurrence, $1 million aggregate on the law, it is $300 to $400 less than what it was last year. The total premium expiring was $208,880. The renewal premium with the same limits was the $208,412, so slightly less than $500.
You didn't knock it down to $12 and make it round out?
I tried. And I will tell you, I did round some cents off to the dollar, but other than that, I tried.
Okay, so if we chose the...
$1 million, $1 million.
If we chose the $3 million annual aggregate for the law enforcement, that's the premium for that, 75, excuse me, for the $1 million, it's 75 and change, for the $3 million, it would be 86 and some change. So about $11,000 increase. So if we chose that, that's going to raise your figures that you gave us for the present package you're proposing would be increased by $11,000. Am I correct?
In round numbers, to move to the $3 million aggregate, that is correct.
But the deductible stays the same?
But the deductible does stay the same. I had requested lower deductibles. And at this point in time, they declined to lower the deductible. However, they were agreeable to increasing the aggregate. And as indicated in the summary, EMC did decline again. And both noted the five bullet points that I made for the reservations and declination.
Well, I guess, since we have a choice on the law enforcement, what's the body's So we're getting $2 million more coverage if we go with the $3 million, okay?
That is correct.
As a former police officer, I think that's great, but I don't want to bust the budget either. So Brad, do you have a recommendation on that?
Again, at this point, as your insurance advisor, I always err on the side of caution. But as I said, I also recognize budget constraints.
Didn't you say that we have never had over $1 million? This is an annual aggregate with tort claims and liability suits and such.
That is correct.
What has been the maximum amount? I like to ask him the tough questions.
Let me see.
Have we ever come even close to the $1 million?
At the, and again, I have to say, speaking historically, there had been requests made when we had numerous situations going on that would have come close to that. However, ultimately, the settlements were made at something substantially less.
I mean, I think from a legal perspective, getting that additional coverage is worth the $10,000. Just, I mean, you never know what could happen, but if for some reason there was just a crazy year where there was a bunch of claims, I mean, you'd be out of pocket. The county would be out of pocket if the aggregate went over $1 million. I think last year, the county wasn't even offered anything more than $1 million.
That's correct. That's the most that they would even offer last year.
It doesn't, being sued doesn't mean there's been any wrongdoing. Nevertheless, you still incur the cost of defending your employee. The other thing is that, I can't put a figure on it, but my guess is eight out of 10, or nine out of 10 cases are settled out of court by mutual agreement. And the insurance company, even if they feel we have a very strong case, a very strong case, which I know of personally in a couple instances, they will recommend a settlement because it's cheaper, less money is spent than taking it to trial. So... Mr. King, give me your questions. Counselor, give me your questions. I know I'm putting you on the spot.
I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but for a single tort claim, the max is $750,000 per person, $5 million for aggregate per a single event. I just think it would be unwise to not, you want to be overinsured rather than underinsured, just in case.
Your recommendation was that we go with the higher bid?
Yes, I mean, it's, you just never know what could happen. You don't want to be a situation where you run out.
Mr. Motion. If we're satisfied, if there are no other questions, is there a motion? Please keep in mind that your motion should include which of the aggregate limits in the law enforcement quote you wish to include.
I make a motion that we accept the higher aggregate, the $3 million, for the total annual premium, $218,903. Would that be accepted?
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, excuse me, motion and a second to accept the package presented, with the exception that we are requesting the, in the law enforcement liability section, the choice of the $3 million aggregate. Is there a question? All who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Mr. Wilson, thank you.
Thank you very much.
How's your horse?
My horse is fine. I'm better, thank you.
For those of you who don't know, and I'm sorry, I have divulging privileged information that Mr. Wilson and his horse had a fight and the horse won, so. Thank you, Brad. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Brad.
Okay, next order of business, department head reports. Mr. Graves is not here. Mr. Havlin?
Good morning.
Good morning.
We've been keeping pretty busy trying to patch holes, drain, and everything. It's a never-ending story. You just have to keep going out and hitting them. We've been doing some mowing. I've had brush cutter out a couple times mowing. With people, I'm shorthanded. It's hard to get enough people to put your equipment out on the roads, because I've got two equipment operators off, and I've got one on vacation right now. So that puts me down to two. So we've been helping with the building down there, the gravel work on it, so I have to leave one in there for that. What Coons is doing on the tower, and we've been, because we brought up that we do part of that, so we've been doing that. But we're slowly getting caught up. As soon as the rain stops, we'll start and gypsy them. I've checked the roads and trying to get as much oil in each area as I can get, but it looks like it's going to be about five tankers per area.
Okay, and anything else you want to tell us?
Yes, I've been, you know I've been looking for a truck to replace the track, though. I've got some. Every time I go find one, the time I get back to it, it's soaked. And they're hard to find. And I seen this one Bobby Gross had up there the day he brought it in.
Go look at this.
And I went up there and asked him if I could drive it for two days so he wouldn't sell it before I could get to it, before I could get down here. And he said he's had some offers on it, but it's a good buy for the low-mile truck, and it ought to last down there a good 10 years or better. It's what you call a heavy half. You can't find a 3/4 of one ton for a decent price with low miles on it.
I saw it yesterday. It's a good-looking truck.
It's a nice-looking truck.
I'm thinking the commissioner's seen the truck, don't you think?
I think we do.
Sounds like a good plan committee.
But it's black. It's not charcoal. It's black.
Oh, okay. Just for information, you're paying for this from within your transfer funds, within your budget?
I had $20,000 in motor vehicle, and $15,000 in purchase of equipment. I just moved $4,000 out of that to pay for that.
And the total price is $24,000?
Yes.
Okay. Is there, are there any questions or ask for a motion?
We are satisfied with the truck?
I think it'd be a good addition to the fleet down there, and it should last.
I make a motion that we accept this proposal for $24,000 for one 2010 GMC Sierra 1500 crew cab to the highway garage.
I second it.
Motion and second to allow Mr. Havlin to purchase the vehicle just mentioned. Question? All who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say aye.
Three ayes.
Well, I have one thing. I approached Mr. Havlin the other day. The mayor had approached me about borrowing some of our equipment to do some work. I want to mention this for a couple different reasons. One is that we're loaning equipment to the city, okay, but insurance regulations require that our driver, operator operate the equipment. Number two, this is for the walkway that they're installing north of Teaviston up into the north end. I want everybody here to understand right off the bat that where they're going to start is right by the apartment buildings that my cousin and I own. So we are getting, we are getting no money off of this. It's not benefiting us one way or the other. We're simply loaning equipment to the city as at the mayor's request. So, anything else? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. County attorney, do you have anything else?
Well, this is old business, but there was a resolution to add an addendum to the county insurance policy as it pertains to employees who reach the age of 65. Ms. King, do you want to elaborate?
They were told that they couldn't contribute to a health savings account. IRS laws state that employers may not contribute to a health savings account. We previously had been donating or putting like $1,500, $1,000 for employee, $500 if they were married for their spouse, into these health savings accounts. And we had an employee turn 65 and found out that we cannot do that. They can have the health savings account, but we cannot be putting any money into their fund. If they want to donate to their fund on their own, that's between them and their spouse, but not something the county can do. So for an employee, once the individual reaches age 65, it is opinion of the county commissioners that the county's contribution for the AHSA was to be a cost-saving benefit to the county. When the employee is no longer eligible to receive this contribution, the county will not continue paying the stipend for his spouse. The county employee that reaches age 65 has the following health insurance option: sign up or keep the PSO health insurance plan, sign up and keep the HSA health insurance plan. However, he or she can no longer receive the HSA contribution. Sign up for the Medicare supplement being reimbursed by the county on a monthly basis per ordinance 2014-15. This addendum is an administrative rule and will expire from year to year based on policy considerations. And it's strictly an administrative thing because the insurance policies change every year as we go with different companies, or even if we renew the policy. So we can't be going through this every time the insurance company changes the policy and whatever. So we're making this administrative rule. Are there any questions?
So this will be added to the handbook?
Yes.
You and Mr. Pell worked on this, and I'm quite satisfied with the work. I'll entertain a motion as to making that inclusive in our department, excuse me, our county policy handbook.
I make a motion.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to include the information that Mrs. King just read into our county handbook. Question? All who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Anything else, Mr. Pell?
I have nothing else at this time, unless it's, you guys have something that you think I need to address?
You will bring that up. Yeah, we can bring it up now. Under old business, kind of jumping ahead, we had talked about an ATB ordinance for the county, for county roads, which does not include go-karts on county roads. I just want to be specific about that. Or golf carts, yeah, sorry. I'm sleep deprived today. We will hold a public hearing at our next meeting on July 7th, which then we'll vote on it that day.
After the meeting, before the meeting?
Okay, we can do it after the meeting, if you want.
It's like 11 o'clock?
11, so.
11 o'clock after our next meeting, please.
And that will have to be posted in the paper?
Yep.
Good.
We just knew 48 hours from that public hearing posted.
Okay. On that?
Okay. Any mail?
Yes, there is one piece. I received, I've received an email from, and I'm not sure if this is a resident of the county or not, the only information I received was the individual's name and email address, but a Sharon Mullin sent an email to me, addressed to the commissioners, and I have forwarded all subsequent attachments of the news links that she sent on the wind turbines. She asked for the commissioners to consider the setback ordinance that was brought up during the area plant commission meeting on May 27. And she had included several, excuse me, news links on this email, which, as I said, I have forwarded to the commissioners for their review. I do have a copy of her cover letter that I passed down so that the commissioners have that portion of it, and we're just going to make that part of the public record and file for the forms.
Okay. Any other mail? Next order of business is old business. Do we have any old business?
Frank, have you set a date yet for our hearing on the APC ordinance?
Tentatively, it's set for 24th. I'm not advertised for it yet because I have to make sure I have secured a building for it. So just assume it, let's see, today's the 16th, so you're talking about eight days. Okay, it only takes two days to actually advertise. I can't set that far. I can set that farther out if you prefer to allow more time for people to be notified. Are you okay with... Both of you okay with that then, twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth of June.
Yes.
What time, please?
Almost at six P.M. Okay, our next order of business is new business. It's our edit plan. And I like to try and explain everything as much as I can. I don't mean to be boring. The edit plans are the income from our edit tax, Economic Development Income Tax, which was instituted to allow funds to be raised to build this courthouse. And part of those edit funds go to economic development also. So our plan for this year, this year, our... The anticipated income is eight hundred fifty-five thousand, four hundred ninety-five dollars. So I have... And the commissioners have in front of them a total plan for expenditures. The first part are fixed expenditures. Then subtracting that from the total, the city of Connersville gets fifty-two percent of the balance. We get forty-eight. And our expenditures for our forty-eight percent are to the senior citizens center, transportation assistance, I should say, partial funding for the EDG, which I put in eighty thousand for this year, regional economic development funding. And let me take just a real quick word on that, if you don't mind. The... There are ways of doing business. And what the state of Indiana prefers now is not for Fayette County, Union County, Blackford County, Vigo County to come in and request things. They prefer to do things in regions, which is why you're seeing a lot of these regional economic development entities coming up, or some of them have been in place for a long time. So that's one reason why we put money back for that. Now, the one that they were using before went downhill for a particular reason. It is now in the process of being reorganized under state statute. And there is a petition, actually, that we have signed, a cleaned-up position, because it didn't look very pretty without a line for our signatures, that will be sent to the governor requesting our participation. At some point, there will be... Since this is just beginning, at some point, there will be what I call a per-person tax. The contribution will depend on a percentage set by the actual number of people in Fayette County. And that's the way it will be done everywhere. This will include our sister county, Wayne County. And I asked the question, not to be rude or insinuate anything, but I asked if Wayne County being a lot bigger than us, are they going to get the lion's share of proceeds? And I was assured that everybody will be treated equally. So that's one of the reasons for these regional things that you hear us talk about. Town of Glenwood gets money, part of our contract with our grant writer in economic development projects. The city of Connersville's share is one hundred thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars. And I rounded that down by forty cents, so I'll have to buy somebody a cup of coffee. So are there any questions from the commissioners? If there are none, I will entertain a motion to accept this capital improvement plan for the edit monies as presented.
I make a motion to approve the disbursement of the edit monies as recommended by the president.
There's a motion in the second to approve the capital improvement plan as presented. Question? All those in favor who signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Patron concerns.
This is from an eight-year-old boy in Rush County, my grandson Mason, who would like to see something done with some moss and algae out at Manlove Park. So I didn't know who I had to talk to, how that looked into.
Let me... The Conservation Club actually manages the park. They have a lease with us, a legal lease. Let me get in contact with him. Do you remember his name?
I'm just going to address something to that matter that you were talking about. It was brought up last year in passing when I was at Manlove. From what I understand, it can't be dredged because it has a dam.
Right.
They say they can put chemicals in it that wouldn't kill the fish, but would kill the algae. So, I mean, I think that's one possibility. But I've talked to the park about what they think is a good idea. But yeah, I think your grandson...
My grandson, he threw out an ounce of worm to get five pounds of moss when he bring it back in.
Yeah.
It's funny now, but I'm sure it's not funny to him.
I'm pulling it off, and here you go again. No, that's just all I needed. I was just curious about that.
I made myself a note.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other patron concerns? Did you want to speak, Dan? If there's nothing else or no one else to come before the commissioners, I'll entertain a motion for... Yes, Mike, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I wasn't on the agenda. Just wanted to make everybody aware that there is a new virus threat going around that we're trying to combat. I have a conference call today with a company that offers security hardware. So I want to get some quotes on that. But it's just going out through email, through web pages. And I think we almost got... Somebody downstairs almost got it this last couple days. I think we got it blocked, but I think they almost got infected with it. It's one of those that goes up and encrypts everything on your computer, everything on a map drive that you have, and then basically holds you for ransom. So trying to get ahead of that, but that's a new threat that they just started coming out with again. About that call with Norse this afternoon to try to get some quotes on upping our security. The hack that supposedly China has done. I don't know if that's who actually hacked the Homeland Security database or not, but their security is much stronger than ours. We're little fish. I don't think we're a target, but I'd rather head it off and try to fight it off than get caught flat-footed, so.
So your suggestion is don't open any emails you don't know where they come from?
The one, the most common thing is it's got an attachment saying claiming that it's a resume and don't open any zip files that you don't know they're from. If it says it's a resume and it's a zip file, it's probably a virus. So I just sent out a mass email this morning about that and just trying to stay ahead of it, so. That's all I have.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else? If not, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the payroll and claims.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion and a second for the approval of payroll and claims. Questions? All those in favor who signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Three ayes. If nothing else comes before the board, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
There's a motion in the second for adjournment. Questions? All those in favor who signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Three ayes. We stand adjourned.